Meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today's date is January 23, 2024. It's 7:00 PM. In the absence of Chairman Michael Ray Jeffries, I, Lou Franco, in my capacity as Vice Chair, now call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I note for the record that we do have a quorum. There are only two of us present, Mr. Alonso.
Renee is coming on right now.
What's that?
Renee is coming on.
Okay, great. We now have four members present. We have Caesar Nuzolo joining us and Renee Emke joining us remotely, and we have Mr. Alonso and myself here in person. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live, on the public access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube after the meeting. The agenda lists all items, all topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. I note also that because we have two members participating remotely, it would only require one, that all votes will be taken by roll-call vote, so if I deviate from that just absentmindedly, please put me back on track. With that, do we have any public comment from the Board this evening?
I do not.
No public comment but a note perhaps, that I cannot see your video on the Zoom, so I don't know if you guys were aware of that.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
He cannot see the video on the room on the Zoom.
Okay. I do have a problem hearing on this sometimes.
That's for the booth.
That's me, it's not them. So, how about now?
There you go.
Okay. All right, I see no public comment from the Board. I'll ask if there is any public comment from the public this evening. Are there any announcements?
I have a couple of announcements. The annual town meeting warrant is now open until March 18 at 4:00 PM for submission of articles, and those can be submitted to the Select Board's office. Other announcements include the Master Plan Steering Committee currently has their second survey out, which can be found on the town website, or also found on the site created by the consultant, and that is planlunenburg.org. Responses to the survey are accepted until January 25. There is a third public meeting during this engagement process that will be on February 1 at the Adult Activity Center. There will be two identical sessions, one from 4:00 to 6:00 PM and the other from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. There will be an off-meeting cycle scheduled for the Finance Committee meeting this Thursday, the 25th, at 7:00 PM, and scheduled particularly to answer budget-related questions, doing a lot of questions coming up this past couple of weeks about school and town budgets. There will be two Board of Assessor meetings next week, one on Monday, January 29 at 6:30 PM, and one on Wednesday, January 31 at 6:30 PM. Mike Torello of Vision, who is our consultant heading the revaluation project, will be attending the meeting to answer any questions, as the assessors will be getting the preliminary evaluation data, and so that meeting will be for that purpose, for the Board to ask all their questions related to that data.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Throw you to the Town Manager. The FinCom is going to be talking about budget-related items, but they don't, unless I missed it, have you submitted a budget yet?
No, it's more about process.
Oh, okay, so it's about budget process, okay. I thought I missed something. Thank you.
Okay. And as far as, if I may, the Board of Assessors, and you're liaising to the Board of Assessors at this point, right? Are they on track and understanding that we, at the appropriate time, we want to see that spreadsheet? They're clear on all of that?
Yes.
Okay.
They are running, and the Town Manager can speak to this because she is fully aware too, that the five-year evaluation is a very tight deadline, with things getting completed, getting approved by DOR, coming back here, having, being able to review it, having to go to the printer for printing the bills and getting them out on time, so very tight, very tight schedule indeed. Like, not even, like barely a week of leeway.
Okay. Is that it for announcements?
Yes.
Any questions on the announcements, Selectman Nuzolo or Emke? Okay. Communications from other boards. Anything? Okay. I have nothing on that. So, we have an appointment at 7:10, and I know that for certain appointments, we actually have to wait till the real time. Do we have to wait till the real time? Okay, I didn't think so. Okay. It's not, hopefully there's not going to be any, you know, any kind of food fight over this already, so. So, with that, I will transition to our 7:10 appointment, which is regarding the recognition of Police Chief Thomas Gamel. On December 13, 2023, the Central Massachusetts Chiefs of Police Association, the CMCOPA, held its annual installation meeting at the Bull Run Restaurant in Shirley. At that meeting, our very own Town Manager Heather Lemieux swore in our very own Chief, Thomas Gamel, as the incoming President of the CMCOPA. The association promotes the development of effective law enforcement in central Massachusetts and aids in the education, professional development, and welfare of its members while developing bonds of fraternity. Furthermore, it is the purpose of this organization to develop and foster harmonious relations with all public and private agencies and organizations concerned with law enforcement in central Massachusetts. So, it's a big deal, and I believe, I visited their website to understand more about what the association was about. It seems to encompass 50 or 60 municipalities, is that, please come on up, Chief.
Oh, central Massachusetts, plus we have two or three communities outside of central Mass that are represented on our Board.
Two or three outside of Mass?
Yep.
Like southern New Hampshire, essentially?
No, within Massachusetts.
Oh, within Massachusetts, okay.
Just outside the geographical.
Okay, okay.
How do they sneak in if it's central Mass?
We accept all. We accept all. Bigger organization.
So, we want to congratulate you, and once again, you continue to do our town proud, and we were lucky to have you. And so, on behalf of the Town of Lunenburg, the Select Board congratulates you, Chief Gamel, and thanks you for your continuing dedication and service to our town. We also wish to acknowledge you by presenting you with this certificate of commendation from the Lunenburg Select Board. We wish you the very best in your new and additional role. Did you have any comments?
Thank you. It's funny, I'm usually the one up here giving praise to my officers, and Tom loves that, I'm able to do that. To receive such an award is humbling. When I became Chief, I absolutely believed in collaboration, believed in collaboration with other communities, and this is just a part of that. It brings us the ability to work with other communities, other police departments, other chiefs, to bring the very best to our community. The educational portion of that is outstanding. It gives us the ability to bring those services and that information back to our officers. Earlier today, I met with our representatives and our Senator for our area, who presented me with a citation also, and I am truly humbled, but what I said there too, without the support of Town Manager Heather Lemieux, I wouldn't be able to do this, and without the support of the Select Board, I wouldn't be in this position right now, and I wouldn't be able to provide this service for the community. Along those lines also, I have to recognize the men and women of the Police Department. They're the heart and soul of the department. They are the heart and soul of this community. Without them, this wouldn't work, and I wouldn't be before you presented this or accepting this award. Lastly, and I know my wife's watching, she couldn't make it here, and I have to thank her for all her support. It's not easy being the spouse of a police officer, you know, even rising through the ranks, it doesn't get any easier. Without her support and having her backing me and truly a life partner, this wouldn't be possible either, and I can't thank her enough, as well as my family. But thank you very much, I appreciate this, and I'm truly humbled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, I want to...
You're going to make me stand.
Of course I want to make you stand. First of all, I want to acknowledge the fact that no one came up and read you your whole life story, as you do for everybody who gets appointed. I feel like we're missing out on that, and we really missed a good opportunity. But, you know, we, I won't speak for "we," I'll let everybody speak for themselves, but I am very proud of you as what you've done, coming through the ranks of, and I remember when you were appointed Sergeant many years ago.
Yes.
So, I remember that meeting very well. And coming through to becoming Chief, and all the good work you've done throughout the, all the different positions you've filled. And to have you serve as Chief here, and seeing the job you've done and the kind of teamwork that you've fostered between the members of the police force and local and neighboring communities, is just self-apparent, and maybe I shouldn't say self-apparent, because people should take the time to acknowledge it. The fact that you take that onto a larger leadership role is an honor for you, it's an honor for the town that you want to serve in that capacity, and I have every confidence that you will bring the same, the same set of principles and have the same results that you've had here. So, I want to thank you for the job you do here, congratulate you on your new position, and, you know, the fact that who you thanked in your comments here really is an example for everybody else, that this isn't a single accomplishment, that while one person may be getting it, it really represents the work of a lot of people supporting that individual in that department, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. I'll echo everything Mr. Alonso just said, and I will also open it up to Selectman Nuzolo and Emke for comment, if you have any.
Yeah, I'll also say congratulations to you, Chief. You know, I think policing is really something that we get right in town, so, you know, I'm excited to see you take on this new regional role and work collaboratively with other communities, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I want to congratulate you as well, and take this opportunity to thank you for everything that you do, as well as all the other members of the Police Department. It's, you guys do a fantastic job, and again, congratulations.
Thank you.
And once again, I will thank you and congratulate you, and we'll present you with this certificate of commendation, which I hope is not a letdown after the state delegation.
No, absolutely not. This is an extreme honor, trust me.
Didn't come with a leather-bound folio, sorry.
Thank you.
There goes all our protective services, right out.
Heather does have my life story on this.
I know, well, we're going to have to work this out.
We'll save that for another day.
All right. I got it from here, I'll keep it all under control. With that, we have on the agenda, appointments and interviews, interview and appointment, rather, and we have tonight, interviews for appointment to the Conservation Commission. We do have three candidates, we have one vacancy, with a term that will expire, once appointed, the term will expire, so it's on June 30 of this year, 2024. We have three candidates, Sam Welch, I hope I don't butcher this too badly, but Jenny Putherer, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And Anthony Nacastro. So, I will, what we will do, this will be the procedure, first of all, I want to thank each candidate for stepping forward. Do we only have one of them present?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, I do want to still thank each candidate for stepping forward and to volunteer. We have more candidates to consider than we have applicants, unless anybody has withdrawn an application.
None of them.
So, the Select Board will have to choose by vote whom to presently appoint. That said, I just want to say that we value the fact that each of you has come forward to interview here tonight and seek appointment, maybe you haven't all come to interview, but we value the fact that you stood up and stepped forward to volunteer. And, you know, rest assured that if you are not appointed this evening, that is no negative reflection upon you, it's simply an inevitable result of the process, that we have, you know, more applicants than we have seats. If you are not appointed, we would ask you to please consider being appointed to some other Board Committee or Commission. You still have the spirit of volunteerism, and perhaps you can find another avenue for that. Or you can apply to this Commission in the future. The town needs people like you, and who have stepped up and not just simply opined from afar as to how things should be, but have put yourselves out there to step up and roll your sleeves up and participate. So, if there were going to be three applicants here, this procedure will still be basically the same, and maybe we'll get joined remotely by the other applicants. We'll turn to a hearing from each candidate, as listed on the agenda in turn, except that I will now go with the only candidate that's here in person. When it is your turn, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, then make any statements you wish to support, you wish to make in support of your candidacy. Following your initial statement, please remain at the podium for questions from members of the Select Board. After all candidates who wish to present have presented and been interviewed, I'll turn to other members of the Select Board for their comments and potentially any final questions that they may have for one or more of the candidates that may have occurred to them after the fact. Following the comment period, I will call for an appointment motion from one of the other members. If that first motion is seconded and voted, and a vote to appoint passes, that will end the process for formal appointment of a full member. Beyond full membership, an unofficial way to participate on the Conservation Commission is to present yourself as an associate member. Now, that's not an official position, we do not appoint that, that's not an official appointment by the Conservation Commission either, but it is highly appreciated when people step up to do that, because being a Conservation Commissioner, it requires a lot of work, it's a lot of, it can be very dense material, the laws and regulations applicable to that, and there's definitely a learning curve. So, presenting yourself to, and a willingness to learn at the Conservation Commission is highly valued, because when another vacancy does open up from a full position, it's nice to have somebody that can come in and step forward and fill that position and have less of a learning curve, they have a smoother on-ramp. So, that would be highly valued, if either of the two applicants that is not appointed wishes to step forward and do that, that would be appreciated. Okay, so with that, I will now ask the only applicant who's here to please come up, state your name for the record and your address, and please make a statement, any statement you wish to make in support of your candidacy.
Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. Lemieux. Anthony Nacastro, 88 Waylam Road, Lunenburg, Massachusetts. All I want to say is, you can never walk into any position and be an expert. Like you said, we learn from the members of the Board and gain their knowledge. I already sit on a couple Boards in town, and I've learned a lot from the fellow members. All I want to say is, I love the Town of Lunenburg, I love what we stand for, and I just want to make sure we leave a legacy for the next generation and protect what we have. And all the Boards have got to work together, zoning Board, planning Board, we all got to work as one to make the best decision for the town and the people involved when they come to us. That's all I have to say.
Okay. I'll, is that all you wish to say for the moment?
That's all I wish to say at the moment.
Okay. With that, I will entertain questions from, I'll start with Selectman Emke, if she has any.
Hi, good evening. Mr. Nacastro, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I was wondering, can you just speak a little bit to your background and why Conservation Commission?
My background?
Yes.
I work for a pharmaceutical company. I'm a senior schedule planner, so I deal a lot with state agencies, MWRA, town boards and stuff like that, so I do have some knowledge, and we do, my plant does sit on wetland, so I do have some knowledge of operating within the town regulations for Conservation Committees and what we need to stay in compliance.
So, that's where your interest comes from, in the Conservation?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, because I love the town. I love this town. This town is a great town to live in. I've lived here 12 years, 13 years, so I just want to give, give back.
Thank you. Thank you for feeling, being like that. No other questions for me at the moment.
Okay, Mr. Nuzolo.
Hi, Anthony. So, thank you for, you know, coming here and speaking to your experience a little bit. Did you say that you have volunteered for town boards in the past?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not familiar with your background and experience, can you just tell us what boards you volunteered on and how long?
I sat on the APDC for almost two years, and then I'm presently a member of the zoning Board, associate member of the zoning Board.
Okay, cool. And you sort of already spoke to your familiarity with the Conservation Commission, you mentioned wetland protection, so that was going to be my next question, and you spoke to your passion for conservation already, why you're interested in the Conservation Commission specifically, so I'll pass it on to whoever the Chair, or Vice Chair, Acting Chair wants to pass it on to now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Alonso, you have anything?
Have you met with the Conservation Commission?
Yes, I spoke with Mary Wilson. We had an in-depth conversation. We talked for maybe 45 minutes, so, yeah.
Can you give us the basic gist about what was discussed?
We talked, you know, what the Board does, you know, and just like I said, I'm no expert, but I read the bylaws, read the regulations, make a determination, and then again, rely on the other members of the Board to help me learn the ways to the Conservation Commission, right? And that's what we do as associate members. We're not experts. We don't know, I don't claim to be, but it's, that's how you learn, read the laws and decipher and listen to the people who've been doing this for a long time. That's where the knowledge comes from.
Okay. Have you been serving as an associate member?
On?
On the Conservation?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm associate member of the zoning Board.
ZBA, okay, okay. Time commitment, so, okay, no problem with that?
Yeah.
Okay. I do not have any further questions.
All right, thank you. The three of you have already covered some of my questions, and I, sorry, I briefly freaked out because there was somebody that looked very much like Bob Pease on the screen, and it wasn't.
I wanted to see what's going on behind.
Okay, so, so you, just the fact that you've served as associate member on zoning, how long have you been doing that?
Three, three years now, four years now, so, yeah.
All right, so, that already probably answered some of my questions, so some of this may be duplicative, but I just want to have it all in the record. I assume, I don't even know, but I assume as part of zoning that you do sidewalks sometimes, or?
Yes, we do. We do sidewalks all the time.
All right. So, you're familiar with and available for that process?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so there's, so there'll be substantial commitment, and I know how committed this Conservation Commission is outside of meetings and, and this, I love this, I was on a Conservation Commission in Southbridge in the mid-'90s, and I've mentioned that before, and the, I don't want to diss the Commission I was on, I think we did the job, we executed the functions, but there's, there's passion here.
There is so many great, the town has so many great properties under conservation, so, I just look, I just look to keep what we have, enforce the regulations, and I don't want to say force the people to comply, but make that comply with what we have to do with the Wetland Protection Act. That's all, just simple things.
Okay. Now, as you probably are aware, you'll be acting, you'll be interacting with members of the public, and, you know, there is a balancing act that goes on there, you not only have to be passionate about enforcing, you know, wetlands bylaws and all, but also...
Yes.
Sort of balancing the interests of people that come before you against that.
Right. We see that now with, I see that now with the zoning Board, right? They come, they present their case, and can't be biased, you can't have a biased, you can't be biased, you have to listen to all the facts and make the best determination that is available.
Yep, exactly, so, okay. I think you have answered most of, oh, I do have one question that's very, very important. If appointed, are you willing to serve as the Conservation Commission's representative to the Stormwater Task Force? Which is a particular need right now.
Whatever it takes, whatever it takes to serve the town.
All right.
If that's, that's something like, an extra thing, then whatever it takes, I don't mind, I don't mind.
I do not have anything further at this juncture, so I'll take any, or I'll entertain any further questions or comments, well, at this point, discussion from among the Board.
So, we're going to vote tonight, right? Possibly.
Yes, well, we have not...
You have an interview.
We're going to have to consider the other applicants.
Yeah, you have to listen to the other applicants.
Yes, yeah, we do have to consider the other applicants, so.
So.
So, we're not, we're not, so really, I just need further questions for this applicant.
So, just clarification, and this is not for you, Mr. Nacastro, this is for the Chair, is that while it's okay to ask whether you would serve on the Stormwater, we're not appointing you, your own commission would appoint you to that committee.
I know, I realize that. I realize that, right?
You're much more polite than I would have been, so that's...
I realize that, it's, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that...
There's a pecking order of how things roll, right?
I just, yeah, it was, it was, it was an inquiry into the willingness, it was not, it was not a conditioned precedent.
No, no, and I didn't think you meant it that way, I wanted to clarify for anybody who was listening, but especially for the applicant, in case he didn't know, that, you know, we're only getting you if, if so appointed, we're only getting you on the Conservation.
Right.
Anything else beyond that is up to the Commission.
Then we can roll from there, we start small and work big.
Right.
All right.
But I have no questions, any further questions, I want to thank you for coming forward, thank you for serving already on the ZBA as an associate, I know it's tough to get a real membership on that, because nobody ever leaves the ZBA, it seems.
It's like the Conservation Committee, it must be a fun Board to be on, right?
Well, you know?
It's like the ZBA.
People find it always great, those guys are great.
Some people find it fun, yeah. Okay.
All right.
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may ask, I mean, the two other applicants, were they notified of tonight's meeting?
Yes, Selena.
Had they accepted tonight's meeting?
Yes, they were.
And did we hear from either of them that they weren't going to be here tonight?
Hi, Jennifer Putherer.
All right, okay. Did you hear your ears ringing in the hallway?
A little bit. So, I was asked to come at 7:30, that's right, right?
7:30? Uh, no, no, there was no...
Well, there's no time associated.
No, there was no time.
But I guess there's a historical, there's a probably historical precedent to why, I'm surprised I didn't say eight, actually.
But you're here just in time, congratulations, you've been appointed, no, I'm kidding. So, please come before...
Let her breathe, okay?
I'm ready.
All right, you're ready. Please state your name and your address for the record.
So, I'm Jenny Putherer, and I live at 10 Sunset Ave in Lunenburg.
Can you go through your last name again, so we hear it correctly?
It's Putherer, so it's just like it looks, Putherer, yeah.
Okay, so, I'll invite you to make any statement that you wish in support of your application to be appointed to the Conservation Commission.
Okay, so... Okay, so, um, I'm applying. I actually just moved to Lunenburg in September. I moved from Framingham. Um, I actually went before the Conservation Commission about a month after I moved here because we have to redo our retaining wall. And I watched a bunch of meetings. I was like, oh, this looks like it might be fun to do. Um, my mother was on the Conservation Commission in Ashland pretty much my whole life, which is where I grew up. She helped, um, do the second super fund in Massachusetts, which was NIAANSA, which was the one after, the one that is civil action was based on. So that's kind of why I'm doing it. And that's my, I guess, why I'm here, so.
Okay, uh, I will, uh, once again turn to the, we have two members of the select board participating remotely. This time I will, uh, ask Mr. Nozolo first if he has any questions.
Sure. Hi, Jenny. Nice to meet you virtually. Uh, I might have missed it, um, but did you speak to, um, you know, what you do, um, I guess professionally and, you know, you mentioned how your mom was on a Conservation Commission, how you went before the commission, but, you know, any other familiarity you have with the roles and responsibilities? Um, and also, um, there's one other thing I wanted to touch on, but I guess you can just start with that.
So I am an IT manager for a construction company, um, which is also a landscape construction company. So I'm very familiar with like stormwater prevention, pollution prevention plans, um, and things like that. And then what was the other question?
Yeah, so you mentioned that you went before them. I was just wondering, um, so let me reword a little better. Have you, um, been paying attention to their meetings and what else is going on? Or have you had a chance to speak to any of the commissioners just to have an idea of, you know, the roles and responsibility of the commission, also sort of what's before them?
Yep, so I spoke to Mary Wilson, um, for like an hour one night before, so, so to kind of vet me before I came here. Um, and when I went, yes, so I've watched a ton of meetings. I've actually watched a lot of town meetings. I kind of, I went to, I majored in political science, so I'm kind of like a bureaucracy nerd. I ended up in IT, but I love watching town meetings. So, yes, I've watched a lot of meetings. I've actually watched these meetings. I actually started this before I came here because I only lived like five minutes down the street. So, yeah, I've watched a lot of meetings. I'm very familiar with what they do. I'm familiar with a lot of the other, watched some open space meetings. Um, so, yeah, so I like to watch town meetings. I'm a nerd.
Well, all right, thank you. I'll, I'll let, uh, other board members ask questions now.
Selectman Emke.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. Um, I see on your application, Jenny, you have in addition a Conservation Commission. You have checked green communities and stormwater task force?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Sorry, can you hear me okay now?
Yeah.
Um, on the, your application, you had checked, uh, Conservation Commission, Green Communities Committee and Stormwater Task Force?
Yes, those were the three that I was most interested in, but I'm obvious, I'm open to other stuff too if this doesn't work out.
Okay, well, I have, I have a little vested interest bias in stormwater task force since I'm on that. So I appreciate Mr. Franco's, uh, question earlier, um, because we do have vacancy. Um, what I wanted to ask you was about your, since you've watched a lot of the Conservation Commission meetings, you know how long they can go?
Yes. By the one that I was in was one of the longest I think they've ever had. So there was a couple of things that were very hotly debated and it went until 12:30 at night. So, yeah, they go long.
Um, okay, so, uh, my question is, um, the time commitment. Are you comfortable with the, the, the time it would take, uh, to participate in, in the Conserva, Conservation Commission and possibly, um, representing on, on any other, um, committee?
Oh, yeah, definitely. So I'm very comfortable with that. I'm comfortable with the sidewalks and all of the other stuff. And, you know, going and getting any, doing any of the classes, that would be helpful and anything like that, yeah.
Um, and you said you do IT for a landscaping company, is that right?
I'm sorry?
You work for a landscaping company?
Yeah, so it's, no, it's a construction, excavation, landscape construction company. Um, they, I think they've only been in front of Lunenburg once, so there shouldn't be any conflicts of interest.
Oh, I wasn't thinking about that. I was thinking more so have, have you had experience dealing with wetlands? You know, the, uh, the regulations around wetlands and, and building around them and those sorts of things?
So I'm the IT manager, so I don't do a lot of that stuff, but I am, so the person who works under me is like my help desk person. He also does the SWPPs, which are the SWPPPs, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plans. So I get to see a lot of what he's doing when he's not working for me in the help desk, um, position.
Okay, that's all from me. Thank you.
Have you only spoken with Mary Wilson or anybody else? Have you gone to a meeting beside the one you were in?
Yes, so I've done, I've watched a lot on YouTube and I think I've gone to three live, two for myself and then one before I went on. So I've seen a lot of them, yeah. I've not spoken to anybody else.
What would you say is the most important charge of the Conservation Commission in your eyes?
So, um, you know, for, following the laws that pertain to protecting the wetlands and the other aspects of the Conservation Commission.
Have you yourself served on any boards in any other place?
So, no, I was mostly volunteering for school stuff in Framingham. My daughter just graduated from Framingham High. So I were here, got out of Framingham when she graduated. And so I, you know, I ran ski club. I did a lot of, you know, like parent teacher nights. I was on the PTO, stuff like that. So now I'm ready to do other stuff.
Sounds good. I appreciate you volunteering and putting your hat in the ring and welcome to Lunenburg.
Thank you.
I believe, this is the, this is the advantage of going last, I believe almost all of my questions have been covered. Just, have you ever had to personally engage with a Conservation Commission, um, and, you know, on behalf of yourself or?
Yes, so right when I moved here, so I, I bought a house on Lake Whalen. So our retaining wall is failing, so we went before the Conservation Commission here to, um, get a approval to replace our retaining wall, which was approved. So we're all done with that now.
All right, I'm sorry if you previously, sometimes I do have a problem here. Yeah, I'm sorry if that was already covered. Um, so again, not a condition of appointment, but would you be available to, and it, and it sounds like you've already got relevant experience or understanding anyway, would you be available to, uh, be a representative from the Conservation Commission to the Stormwater Task Force if appointed?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And, um, the fact that you volunteered to watch so many town meetings and that you lasted until 12:30 uh, at one meeting tells me that you can take pretty much anything, so that's, that's good. Uh, uh, I do not personally have any additional questions because I think they were all covered.
I do have one more.
Okay.
Mr. Alonso. You, you mentioned that, that you came before when you lived on Whalen Park, but it looks like your address that you're on Lake Shirley now.
Oh, no, so that's Sunset Lane on Lake Shirley. This is a common mistake. I'm on Sunset Ave, which is technically Harris Ave.
See, that's what happens when you don't read the second part. You're just so used to seeing sunset.
Yeah, everybody thinks that I'm on Lake Shirley. I'm on Lake Whalen. Yes, I'm like directly on the lake with the very poorly doing retaining wall.
Actually, I do have a couple more questions. Um, was your, uh, involvement or, or engagement with the Conservation Commission positive?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Uh, and do you believe that you will be able to balance the interests of conservation and people that appear before you, uh, you know, impartially and without bias?
Definitely.
Okay. I have nothing further at this time, so I want to thank you definitely for stepping up and putting yourself out there.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh,
So the question, Mr. Chair, that I would raise is do we want to give Mr. Welch another week to come forward? Or do we not? That's question number one, because the answer to that question will be determine what we do next.
Um, yes, I agree with that and I, that's a very good point, Mr. Alonso. Uh, um, I, do we have, what's the most recent communication we have from, from Mr. Welch?
I would have to ask the executive assistant that.
Oh, I, I think it's a good, it was a question, I know, but I'm going to take it as a suggestion. I, I personally think that's a good idea.
It wasn't a suggestion. It was just a question, but I'm fine with either way. I would have one question. We, we did last week, the chair mentioned whether, you know, that we would determine tonight whether we would have a meeting next week. The question is, will we be having a meeting next week?
We are meeting next week and the February 6th meeting is canceled.
Right, okay. So that is happening, okay. So then with that, if we're meeting next week, I would be, I would be uh, willing to give Mr. Welch an opportunity because maybe something happened beyond his control. I will let him do that and see if he will come in, but only one week extension. So otherwise we will appoint. That's what I would say. I mean, that, things can happen beyond somebody's control. Maybe he couldn't get in touch with us. And I'd rather, since we had three appointments and they were confirmed by Elaine, I would like to give him the opportunity.
I think, I, I personally support that. I think that's fair. Uh, any comments, um, from you, Mr. Nozolo, or, or, uh, Ms. Emke?
No, I think it's fair. I think we should give him another week, just, just in case something happened like Mr. Alonso said.
I agree.
Okay, let's do that. I think it makes sense. That gives us the benefit of having three applicants before us and we also don't, you know, dissuade people from stepping up and offering their services by being draconian, uh, so. And there's no like instantaneous, immediate need to fill this, uh, you know, so a week isn't going to kill it, I don't think. So, yes, let's do that. A good suggestion. Thank you. Okay, with that, let's, uh, close that portion, uh, and move on to the town manager report.
Let's see, it wasn't, um, uploaded.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if I, if I may bring up the other agenda item once, just with one more comment.
Sure.
And question. I see that Mr. Pease, who's a member of the commission, is here and, and I would ask, does he, if he knows, and obviously I realize he's not maybe asked the commission, is the commissioner going to, is the commission going to provide any guidance on the three candidates? Have, do you know, has it, has it been discussed? Usually, or not usually, often, the body to which the people are interviewing come up with recommendations?
Uh, Bob Pease, 11 Wintergreen Court, uh, Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission. Mary and I work closely together. Um, Mary's, Wilson is the chair. Um, we had not contemplated making any recommendations. I'm reconsidering that on a personal level, um, so you may hear from me before next week.
Okay.
Uh, but, um, uh, to, to, we weren't, we weren't planning on it.
Okay, fair enough.
I, I was here tonight just to observe and, uh, in case there were any questions or anything else.
And I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just wanted to.
And that's quite all right. I, I would say, um, that, uh, none of the present commissioners are willing to serve on the Stormwater Task Force. And I'm sure Ms. Emke would tell you that's an important committee. And, uh, I was very encouraged to hear tonight that someone had experience in stormwater.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your indulgence, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you. It was good, it was good to invite Mr. Pease up here. Um, now with that, let's move to the town manager report.
All right, thank you. I'll start with the Boarding Committee Commission vacancies. There is one vacancy on the Architectural Preservation District Commission. One vacancy until the next annual town election on the Cemetery Commission. One vacancy on the Conservation Commission pending. Council on Aging, there's one vacancy. There is one regular member and one associate vacancy on the Green Communities Committee, which, uh, that, um, is, will be up for discussion, I think, next week. One of the members that's an associate is looking to become a field of regular member role. Um, therefore would be, uh, if that does occur, it would be two associate vacancy, vacancies. There is one member-at-large vacancy on the Open Space Committee and one vacancy on the Personnel Committee. Anyone interested in any of these positions, you can fill out a volunteer application on the town website, complete it and return it to the select board's office. And if you have any questions on the roles and responsibilities, you can contact the office at 978-582-4130, extension 144. For employment opportunities with the town, there are the following positions. A digital services and outreach librarian, which is 34 hours a week. Executive assistant to the town manager, 36 hours a week, as our executive assistant is retiring in March. The facilities custodian is 40 hours a week. That is due to the promotion of, um, who was in that role to the facilities superintendent. Heavy equipment operator for 40 hours a week. Land use director for 40 hours a week. Staff librarian, young adult, which is 30 hours a week. And a temporary position for administrative assessing assistant, which is 32 hours a week as the person in that position is out on medical leave right now. For more information on these positions, you can go to the town website under job opportunities and learn how to apply. The principal assessor position was, uh, filled as of last night. I met with the Board of Assessors and they ratified my appointment of Linda McQuaid to fill that role. Linda is currently the town assessor and heir, and prior to that, she was the principal assessor in Boxborough and before that, the assistant assessor in Westford. She has over 20 years of residential appraising experience, so well versed in that. She is, um, MAAO certified and familiar with different KAMA databases. Her start date is dependent on her 45-day clause in her current contract. So I'll keep the board informed of when her official start date will be. Updates on requests for proposals and invitations for bids. The public safety carpet project was awarded to Attik, Atkinson, carpet and flooring in the amount of $43,790 and is expected to be complete by March 18th. This project was funded in the fiscal '22 capital plan for $50,000, so therefore there should be a surplus barring any unforeseen issues. The assistant town manager and I drafted a personal property cyclical request for quotes that was reviewed by the Board of Assessors last night and was accepted without any revisions. Quotes for personal property cyclical inspections will be solicited shortly. And, uh, we have used historically a company called RRC. And, um, I anticipate that, uh, they, there's very few companies out there that do personal property, um, evaluations. But that's an update on that. Budget updates for fiscal '25. As previously announced, our health insurance provider, MYA, was announcing their rate range this past weekend at the MMA Annual Meeting. The MYA Health Benefits Trust announced that members will receive rate increases in fiscal '25 that range from a minimum of 2.2% increase to a maximum of 9.95% increase and the average will be an increase of 6.6%. At, every year after we receive that rate range increase, I reach out to our representative to see if we can lower our estimate, because we start out in the fall with an estimate that's, um, is changed. If we're able to at this time of year with that rate range release, if our original estimate is higher than the maximum or higher than the average, I ask if we can lower it and, um, get that feedback. And initially she said we should maintain it based on our loss ratios, but expected that due to our very high, uh, some of our claims that get pulled out that are paid by the trust, that expected it to come down lower. But after, uh, later in the day, she notified me that we were, would be able to bring that down to the 6.6%. And, um, so that will be our number until we get our actual renewal rate in mid-February. So it'll be no higher than 6.6%. So that was, um, our original estimate was 10%, it is now 6.6% for active health insurance. I know this has been, uh, a highly discussed topic, um, both, um, primarily more at the school because they've gave the preliminary presentation last week.
What does that equate to in difference?
That is, um, I've asked that question. Um, I think that is. That is, I've asked that question. I think that is being worked on by the superintendent, because they're-
No, but just in general, for us, like on the town side, what is, what is the difference between 10 and 6.6 mean in a dollar amount? Do you have an estimate what that means?
Um, it should equate to-
I'm not going to hold you to it, just around.
450,000.
So significant, okay.
Is, um, so, so, sorry, half of that. So a 10% would have been 450,000 for active insurance.
Gotcha.
So.
So two-thirds.
Not insignificant.
Nope.
On another note, I had reached out to our energy broker for the municipal aggregation program, which is currently holding all the town accounts at a rate of .11868, so 11.868 cents per kilowatt, with an expiring contract in November of '24. He said the town would get better rates than the aggregation rates at the expiration of the contract due to our size and load profile, and indicative pricing is trending that it will be lower than our current rate. I'm working with Tradition Energy, which is the town's energy broker outside the aggregation program, to review pricing from all of their suppliers, and in the coming months, we'll be watching that, and was told we can expect possible downside market movement for electricity costs due to milder weather forecast. So another piece of good news on the budget front, if you can consider a 6% increase, good news, but in the scheme of things, from a 10% to a 6%, 6.6.
The direction is good, yes.
The direction is good. And I'll bring this up while we're talking about, touched on municipal aggregation. When I spoke with our energy broker about that program, and I asked if the town accounts come off, does that allow for more residents to join the aggregation program? And I believe they'll be able to put something out shortly that more, there'll be capacity for more people to join.
Excellent.
That's forthcoming. Because I know that, as well, has been a strain on a lot of residents for their electricity costs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to say that it is absolutely huge that the principal assessor role has been filled, and an appointment has been made. Just emphasize for the public, too, that that is not the type of, there are very few people that do this. They're not easy to find, and you don't just snap your fingers and fill that position overnight. So that's, that's huge. And congratulations and thank you for, for the work in getting that done.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions for the town manager on the report, on the town manager's report?
I do have two. Number one, only because we're talking about energy, I have not heard anything, but have you heard anything about the unitill rate case in front of the DPU?
I have not seen anything, any correspondence.
Because I know, I mean, I know people's bills are surprising lots of people, even with the milder temperatures. I know people's bills are just going crazy. You know, we're at, I believe, up over 30 cents a kilowatt hour, which is in the top 2% of the country. And I say 2%, and it may even be 1%. So it really is crazy where we're living. A colleague of mine in St. Louis pays like 11 cents a kilowatt hour. So. Second thing I wanted to ask is, you went to the MMA? Was there any-
I did not.
You did not go to the MMA?
Did not go to the MMA.
Oh, wow. Oh, so I rescind that question.
But I was in communication with a member that did.
Is that unusual? I thought you'd go every year.
Um, I've, haven't gone in the last couple of years, but I had a family commitment this weekend.
All right. I want to, I haven't gone in many years, and I think next year, if I am still on the board, I will go. Because it has been a long time since I've been there.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, was that the defense or the prosecution resting?
Yeah.
I'm kidding. Yes, I'm joking. Well, thank you for that report. If there are no further comments or questions, I'll move on. Old business. Now, under the old business, I, we have been trying on the bylaw review and comparison to get, to do that when we have a full board. In consultation with Mr. Jeffries, and we're going to punt on that again, so that we do have a full board when we do that. However, at this time, any, you know, we'll have some discussion on the draft board commission handbook, if anybody has any comments, or to this point, or useful guidance based on partial or full review of the current, the draft that currently exists. So I'll start with Selectman Emke, if you have anything.
Yes, I did have a chance to look at that this afternoon. I think two comments. One, I think it's, it's great that, I think the content there is, is valuable. And one piece, I was wondering if it's worth including. I think it is, but I will leave it to the town manager to decide how to, how and who to contact regarding setting up the Zoom meetings for, for remote meetings. I didn't see that in there. There was a section on remote meetings, but if I recall correctly, I don't remember seeing exactly how to set those up, and that would be helpful, having gone through that recently myself. The other piece, and this is, this is probably me being lazy, sometimes throughout the document, we'll say, according to town bylaws, except, or maybe I have it reversed, when the town bylaws and master general laws don't quite agree, if it's possible, and it may, it may be too much, and maybe you don't want to get this level of detail in the handbook, to summarize what is appropriate and what applies in that situation, rather than asking the person to look at master general law, this, whatever chapter is indicated, and then try to find it in our bylaws and see, you know, if they agree or if there is an exception. Does that make sense?
Could you give me just one example of that?
I knew you were going to ask that.
[laughing]
I have to go back and look. I can't, I don't have access to a printer here, and I couldn't add notes to the file. So I can, I can, I can go in and find an example.
Okay, thank you.
If I remember, yeah. Remind me next week if I forget. And I think, I think with, going back to remote meetings, I think there was something in there about having, when video is part of the remote meeting, that board members, committee members, whatever, would have their camera on during the meeting? Am I remembering correctly? I think that's something actually for our bylaws, so that could be a separate discussion.
I think that was a point that was made at one of a previous meeting, talking about policy.
Yeah, it has come up in the past. That's all I can remember, so far, as far as I got. Oh, and the appendix, appendices weren't there.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Those would have to be added.
Okay.
Anything further? Okay, Mr. Nuzzolo.
The only thing I have is like kind of a nitpick. Also, this is great. Like, this is going to be such a great resource, just want to say, so thank you. But a couple of the links are broken, so either it goes to a page where, you know, it's just like a 404, so whatever resource, like PDF or whatever, that it was supposed to go to, I don't think is on, like, the Mass.gov website or anything. And one of them, I noticed, under meeting slash open meeting law, the URL is correct, so if you like copy it and paste it into the browser, it's there, and like the PDF is there. But the actual link, when you try to click it, is just messed up. It's not like the actual URL. So I guess that's just like a very minor nitpick. But other than that, you know, I kind of perused it, but I haven't really gone in too in-depth. I think it's really helpful, I know, for like me, when I started volunteering, like, the biggest questions I had were about open meeting law, and this is like a very simplistic description of like what you can do, what you can't do. So, yeah, no, I think it looks really good.
Yeah. I thought I had tested all those links. I'll go back and check all of those. Thank you.
Mr. Alonso.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have reviewed the draft board and commission handbook, and if I exclude number 13, which is the remote participation policy, I am fine with all the other recommended changes. To Mr. Nuzzolo's point, I would agree that we want to make sure that the links are active, otherwise it kind of defeats the point of having links in there. The only thing I'd like to discuss further would be specifically the remote participation policy, because there has been some proposals made about it. I have certain feelings about it, as well as, as well as others, regarding, you know, the rampant use of it that is unnecessary, the fact when people are, they're not on camera, these are things I think we have to discuss as a board, and I think we have to discuss, you know, that's one of the things we have to wordsmith together. It's not going to work, people coming in, pooling it together. We really need a workshop to come up with that policy. One of the policies, comments in here is that you can't participate in executive session in remote participation, which I think is a good one. Again, having somebody in remote participation defeats the, the privacy and secrecy of executive session, because you don't know who's on the other side, and you don't know who else might be interrupting or intercepting the Zoom. So we should be enforcing these, and we should be really, be analyzing what we should or shouldn't do, the video policy being the most important. If you're a part, just like, just like Ms. Emke and Mr. Nuzzolo are now, people should be able to see you, not just hear you. And I know we have, this policy was written initially when people were able to just phone in, so nobody was thinking about Zoom back then. It was kind of fledgling six years ago, for the town at least. And that's the policy I think we should focus on. Everything else was pretty much standard changes, and I agreed with all of them.
Just for clarification, I didn't write this policy. This is the policy that's in place. Okay. I just want to make sure.
And there's no need to be defensive, although I was being prosecuted in attorney.
No, I wasn't trying to be defensive. I just meant, for clarity, like-
No, I know this was lifted, and we, and, and a lot of it was done, you know, first of all, we had a remote participation policy for audio, then COVID hit, and everybody was scrambling to what to put together. I think now, with three years, four years under our belt, I think we, well, three years under our belt, we should be able to determine what works, what doesn't work, what's in the best interest of the public, and what's in the best interest of getting volunteers. I've heard things like, well, if we go back to forcing, you know, meetings onsite, then people will quit. I'm like, well, I'm sorry they feel like that, but you know what? I think many meetings should be onsite. Most of them should be onsite, unless in extenuating circumstances. Like, if there's danger to drive a big snowstorm, it's okay to do one remotely to not lose a meeting, but just because people feel like staying at home, that's not a great reason for me. And then the way, the, the interests of the public, I think, outweigh the committee members in those cases, or the elected officials.
Okay. So I, I've, I've looked at this with two passes. The initial pass was looking at sort of all the subjects that were covered, which I think are great. And I do think that this, in general, this whole, this is a great resource. It's just a nice central place when you've got a question. I mean, doesn't matter how long you serve on boards and commissions or committees, you're going, there's going to be things when you're like, gee, I don't really know what the rule is on that. So it's a nice to have a, one central place to go and, and get that. So my first pass was looking at all of the topics that were covered. My second pass was much more granular, and I confess, I've only gotten through 10 meeting minutes, so I'm probably, it sounds like I'm the least prepared one here tonight. But I did whip everyone else along and make sure they were prepared, so I served that function. So I am still up to this point. I agree with the comments that have been made, and I, having gone through 10 in great granularity, I'm liking everything I'm seeing so far, but I do need more time to just get through the rest of it. So I hope that provides the guidance that, collectively, that this provides the guidance you've been looking, just to get this thing moving along.
Yes, yep. It gives me a good, at least some items to look at and move it forward.
And I'm assuming final formatting is also part of the-
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. If, unless there's anything further, I'm going to move on. We will, again, we will punt on the bylaw comparisons and review, and now move to current business. So, as part of current business, so town manager seeking authorization for, to, her to sign a revised, the revised Neshoba Valley Regional Dispatch Agreement, which, if I understand correctly, Townsend is off and Boxborough is coming in.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other aspect of that you wish to discuss or enlighten us on?
Just that the agreement itself was revised in March. The board voted on that revised. We did a full review as part of the administration board. That's one of the boards under the Neshoba Valley District Agreement, as well as an operations committee and a sub-finance committee that reviews all the finances for the district. And that version was voted on by the board in March. So the only change here is adding Boxborough in to the agreement. And Townsend left the district last fiscal year. They joined another regional entity, and the executive director was tasked with looking for additional towns to take on that were similar to the communities within the district. That was an important aspect that we wanted to maintain, the same demographics and call volume and all of that. And she started speaking with Boxborough. They were looking to join a district, and it was a good fit, and all three committees voted favorably to add Boxborough.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on this topic? Okay, I'll, I guess we need a, we need a vote on this, so I'll take a motion on this.
I would make a motion that we authorize the town manager to sign the revised Neshoba Valley Regional Dispatch Agreement by adding Boxborough as discussed.
I'll second it. Okay, so this will be roll call vote, unless there's any further discussion. Roll call vote. Selectman Emke.
Aye.
Selectman Nuzzolo.
Aye.
Selectman Alonso.
Aye.
And an aye from myself. That's four to nothing in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes. So we only have two of us here to sign the minutes, so like, why don't we just punt on that till next week?
You don't need to sign them. You need to vote on them.
Okay.
If everyone has reviewed them.
All right. In that case, I will take, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of September 14, 2023, as written in the Google Drive.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Emke.
Aye.
Mr. Nuzzolo.
Aye.
Mr. Alonso.
Aye.
And an aye from myself. Approved, four to, four to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, warrants. We have a payroll warrant, just one, right?
Yeah.
A payroll warrant-
Amount is written in.
In the amount of 700-
It's a counts payable.
Oh, I'm sorry. Whoops. Accounts payable warrant in the amount of $765,197.7.
Which will need one more signature after tonight.
Yes, we are only going to have two signatures. I still left a space for Mr. Jeffries. All right, so that's it on that, right, on the warrants? Okay, so we will need another signature in here.
We can circulate it through.
Caesar, can you come in and sign it?
No, sorry.
Action items. Oh, sorry. Action items, any action items? Okay. No action items. Committee reports. We'll start online first. Mr. Nuzzolo.
I do not have one, but I will make it my goal to connect with the chair of the planning board to see what I've been missing. There was a- There was a meeting recently that I wasn't able to watch, before that, they weren't having meetings for a while, and there was one that was on the agenda, but I couldn't find it on YouTube or Facebook, so I don't know if they did meet that night or not, but, which is kind of irrelevant, so, no, I don't have one tonight.
Okay, thank you. Selectman Emke.
Yes, I am too. So, the stormwater task force met last week, um, and we, the DPW director had invited some folks from Chelmsford to present to us about their stormwater utility. Unfortunately, they weren't able to make it, but they provided some information. Um, the people who are there now weren't there when the stormwater utility was being, being created, so they came in after it was already done. But the next meeting, uh, we are going to try to have our current, I'm gonna blank on the name, CEA, maybe, is that right? The engineering consult.
CEI.
CEI, I was close. Um, have them come in and give us some information on, you know, how and what is needed to, to create a stormwater utility. So, the storm, stormwater utility is the primary topic right now. The other committee report I have is school committee, who met last week, um, and the superintendent presented a ninety-plus slide presentation on fiscal year 25 proposed budget and proposed cuts in order to, as part of that budget, the budget still came in over the two and a half percent, even with those cuts, I think it was 3.6% increase. I know there's been a lot of discussion recently on social media, and I know we've been getting a lot of emails from parents and so on about the proposed plan, and so I want to make folks aware that there is a school committee meeting tomorrow night. Um, let me quickly, I don't want to get the time wrong, I believe it is 6:30 tomorrow night at the middle school collaborative room. And the agenda is primarily, well, the proposed fiscal year 25 budget. So, of course, public is, is invited to comment at that meeting as well. And that is all I have to report for committees.
Mr. Chair. Okay, thank you.
Is there a Zoom meeting for that, too? Is, is that on?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay.
There is, the agenda is online. Oh, I should, I, actually, I should add too, that reminds me, the presentation that the superintendent gave last week is available on the public schools website, if, you're working off of two laptops here, lunenburgschools.net, and you can, if you go to school committee and, and documents, you can find, the presentation is available online.
Thank you. Mr. Alonso.
Board of Assessors met yesterday, and as the town manager just said, the majority of the meeting was talking about and, and appointing, ratifying the appointment of the regional tax assessor, the principal assessor, sorry. And FinCom has a meeting, as the town manager also said, this Thursday.
Okay, one is prospective, and that is that the Economic Development Committee will meet on Thursday at 6:00 PM in the Ritter Building, pending a quorum, of course, that's, that's always the case. This, my second one is not, it's not a committee report, but it's, it's, uh, not a, not a committee report, but, because it wasn't an official meeting, really, but it was on last Friday, the Council on Aging Adult Activity Center jointly held a, a volunteer recognition ceremony, essentially. And of course, you know, it's just by the nature of a lot of the, I was, I was glad that a lot of the volunteers did show up to be recognized, because they've traditionally had issues over there, people just do it to do it because they want to volunteer, and they've tried to do this in the past and nobody shows up, so they really plugged it this time, and, and volunteer, excuse me, volunteers did show up to be recognized, and I'm glad they did. And I was inspired by, really, you just don't get a sense of how many volunteers there are and how many hours they volunteer. And if I, I, I may be misquoting the number, but I believe last year, the, maybe you have this number, but the, the, if they were paid minimum wage, the dollar equivalent of the volunteerism would have, to the town, would have been somewhere around $24,000. So, that's a lot of volunteering. So, I just wanted to put that out there, and is that, do, do, do you?
It sounds about right.
Oh, okay.
I don't remember the exact number.
And beyond that, the pizza they had there was pretty good, too, so. Uh, so I just really wanted to mention that, because it was, well, it wasn't an official meeting or anything like that, it was, it was nice to go and, and just see all that, and to see volunteers get their, get recognition. That's all for me on that, on committee report. Um, so you, Madam Town Manager, you've already mentioned that we, we are going to have a meeting.
Next Tuesday.
Next week, on the 30th, and not have the meeting on the 6th.
Correct.
Okay.
The, the board was originally scheduled to meet on the 6th, and one of the topics was going to be the Flat Hill Road discussion, including invitation from, to the trustees. So, I coordinated to make sure they could meet the following week, so the 13th, that topic will be on the agenda. Elaine notified everybody that's been on that email list, that are butters or interested parties to that date.
Okay, thank you for that. So, with that, um, we'll go to public comment, starting with the town manager, if you have any additional public comment, or any public comment now, comments within the confines of public comment.
The only public comment I would have, I said this after the, near the conclusion of the assessors meeting last night, after the ratification and appointment of the new principal assessor, was that I'm very grateful for Brina Swisey and her filling the void that we had in that office, and she is going to stay on to assist in that office, we're down, she's the only person in that office right now, as one, the other employee has been out unmedical, so she's been holding everything together for us, so very grateful to her and her service to the town.
Thank you.
Thanks to her. Yeah, I will, yes, I will echo that, too, as well. We were fortunate to have her to fill that, fill in that role on an interim basis, we would have been, as bad as things were, and they were bad, they would have been catastrophic without her having stepped up and done that.
Yes.
So, um, anything further?
No, thank you.
Okay, so, public comment from the public. Mr. Passios, please. And just as a formality, please state your name and address, we know it well, but.
Believe it or not, last week, I totally forgot and was reminded. Dave Passios, 56 Wedding Street, for full disclosure, member of the Green Communities Committee, and also seated on the Finance Committee. In response to your question, Mr. Alonso, earlier, I was one of the three that represented Lunenburg at MMA this year, and their attendance was record number, 1,300 preregistered, as well as many hundreds that registered on both days on walk-ins. Fantastic conference, lots of great conversation and subjects in the workshops. The chair of the Finance Committee and myself were able to, we actually split up, especially at the meals, we sat with different groups separately, and had great conversations with challenges that they were having and we were having, and so on and so forth, so great exchanges back and forth. And I managed to sit with the group from the Sherburne area, where the Bridge of Flowers is, so I get a perspective of Western Mass that I don't normally get, so it was well worth attending. I'm gonna take a little pat on the shoulder with the communication that the town manager got on Monday afternoon. We actually attended the MIIA annual meeting for elections of two members onto their various boards, and therefore the announcement of the figures for the insurance. At the end of the meeting, we stuck around and had a conversation directly with the director, and he promised that he'd be in touch with Heather on Monday, so, yeah, we, that was one of the things that came out of that, and it, it gives you an opportunity, and I know you've been to one or two of them, that it gives you an opportunity to get a, a face-to-face with people that you normally wouldn't, that are in positions to give you information or are positions of influence that can help you down the road. I got, we all got a lot of information about the federal money that's still hanging out there, that the state's gonna go after, that will trickle down to the citizens of Massachusetts and the cities and towns of Massachusetts, and how to watch out for them and get on mailing lists so that we're aware of them as the money comes around. We've already been sent a notice, it's moving to the Seaport District next year, at the convention center, be January 24th and 25th, I believe.
It was still at the Heinz this time?
Excuse me?
It was still at the Heinz this year?
Yeah, it was.
It was at the Heinz this year, yes.
What was the third person from Lunenburg, by the way?
Um, our newest member of the Finance Committee.
So, all three were from the Finance Committee?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've been there six or seven times over the years, and it's been a while since I've been there, and I should go back.
It's been three or four years, at least, since I was there, I've only been one other time, and I spent most of my time in the trade show that first time I was there. This year, I barely went into the trade show, I was too busy talking with people from all over the state.
Well, glad you got a lot out of it. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the public? Any public comment from the board?
None for me.
I have none? Okay. Um, okay, so with that, I will take a motion, or entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded. Roll call vote, Ms. Emke.
Aye.
Mr. Nuzola.
Aye.
Mr. Alonso.
Aye.
And an aye from myself, four to zero on adjournment. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, have a good night.
Good night, everyone.